Rule call, please.
Lori Krenski.
Here.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Dennis Keeney.
Here.
Okay, we just did the pledge. I don't think anybody knew, so we'll go ahead and move on to the business. So first thing on the agenda is President Proctempa, but we request nominations for President. Does anyone have a nomination for President?
I would like to nominate Lori Krenski.
Any other nominations?
I move to nominate Scott Fischel.
Any other nominations for President?
Since we have more than one nomination for President, when we do the roll call, you'll simply say who you want to be President. And that way whoever has the most votes will become President. You can vote for yourself. There's no conflict, but it's the President selection.
We call roll.
Lori Krenski.
Myself.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Lori.
Denise Brewster.
Scott.
Scott Fischel.
Scott.
Dennis Keeney.
Scott.
All right, so Scott Fischel is the new President, so we will switch positions. Maybe?
Maybe.
Do they change my names? Congratulations.
Okay, next we have the nomination for Vice President. And I nominate Dennis Keeney for Vice President. Are there any other nominations? And so since there's no other nominations, it's...
We just call the roll call.
Just call it all.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Old habits.
Yep.
Okay, so the make a motion to approve the Vice President for 2025.
We just did that.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so we established the meeting dates for 2025. If everyone has their calendar, is January 30th good for everyone? These would all be Thursdays.
So we've usually had the fourth Thursday. Is there, are we continuing that practice or are we just making...
We find with the 23rd, which would be the fourth.
I mean, I'm just asking.
No, no, it's a good question. I'm going to be out of town until this, the beginning of this week, therefore I wouldn't be able to do the 23rd. So is the 30th okay?
Yeah.
So January 30th, and then February 27th. Is that one okay?
March would be the 20th because spring break is the 27th.
Calendar here. Okay, so, all right, so we have February 27th and then March 20th for March.
Correct.
Because of spring break?
Because of spring break.
Then April 24th. Is that good, everyone? Okay, and then May 22nd. Now, okay, so then June 26th. Then July 24th. Then we get into August, and I believe we were doing a week earlier because of contracts. Is that correct, Gary?
Simply, yeah, we try to do it the...
14th, the 3rd.
Yeah, we're early, so there's the first and all before the first.
Right, so instead of the 21st, it'll be August 20, August 14th.
When do we start school?
21st or...
21st, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then September would be the 25th. October would be the 23rd. And November would be the third Thursday because of Thanksgiving. That would be the 20th. And then December would be the 18th. The meetings would begin at 6:00 PM, same as now. Okay. So make a motion to approve the schedule of the meetings for 2025. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you call the roll?
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
We have standing authorizations for 2025. There, there's a long list of them and read through them, and they're pretty normal. Gary, I would suggest that there's no new changes.
Yeah, there's no changes. It's all the same usual stuff as we have each year.
Okay, so then I make a motion to approve the following standing authorizations, number one through number 34, as recommended by the Treasurer and Superintendent. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Questions?
I just had a couple of questions. On number seven, authorized the Treasurer to borrow against a first half tax settlement. Can you just talk about that for a couple minutes?
It's something we haven't done in a long time, but it basically, if we're, you know, back in the 2012, the 2015 time when the district was in more of a poor financial condition at the time, sometimes we'd have to borrow to make payroll in the January to February timeframe before the first property tax settlement is. We haven't had to do that in recent years, but it's just been a standing authorization to do that. We basically doing a tax anticipation type of thing. When I first started, I was able to request from the County Audit and Office, they were able to advance us money a little bit early. So we haven't had to do that probably since probably 2013 or 14, probably was the last time.
So it authorizes you, but we're not doing that at this point?
Correct.
Okay, I just want a clarification. And let me see, number 17, that has to do with authorizing the Superintendent to hire employees on a contingency basis. I think we kind of do that now where you...
We try to avoid it as much as possible, which is why I put the August. If we have a student, and a lot of times we get the background check, it might be a student who we have a student who moves in who has a special aid need or something to that, except that we didn't foresee we would employ that person right away. But it typically comes with an email, just with a heads up, we're doing this. We need to do this because of X, Y, and Z. It's a practice we try to avoid.
Okay, okay.
The only time, like, I think it was a couple of years ago, when the board meeting was on the first day of school, and you had people working the first day of school, and the board meeting was after that first day of work. So that's why we adjusted the board meeting in August, but also that's where that situation would come up most frequently at the end of school year.
Okay.
And Ms. Brewster, this had come up in the past, and we made the adjustments, as Mr. Byko is saying, to accommodate that as best as we could, not that it wouldn't happen.
It has occurred this, I think it was this school year or last school year, we needed to hire a special aid immediately. We went through all the background checks and made it in place right away. I'd send an email, just say, hey, we're putting this in place the next day they started. But it was a, it's a very, it truly is an emergency type basis.
Okay. And then number 18, I know we increased that maximum of authorizing the Superintendent to serve as purchasing agent for the school district and spend a maximum of $15,000 without prior board approval. You know, I know that that's a situational thing, whether it's an emergency, can't wait for the next board meeting. Is that usually the intent, that it can't wait till the next board meeting?
We don't board approving the next $15,000, otherwise we're approving hundreds of items every board, because it's probably just probably 10 to 20 purchase orders a day that you approve for various items.
Because generally, I think I only saw it once, but maybe...
There was, there was one that I think we listed that was, came in at 14 for a fencing or something, or some kind of building.
Well, there's, there's, we don't see them because it's everyday operations.
Yeah, okay.
I think the only time we really ever did an emergency purchase beyond the $15,000 was during COVID, when we had to get some things that were required by the Department.
All right, I'm good.
Well, if there's water main break, you know, it's like a Buckeye, if I think that was under 15, that'd be a situation where...
Yeah, the under, under 15 is typical.
Or if you actually be able to have a roof collapse.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Gary, can you call the roll?
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
So next we have a standing author...
I believe you do have to declare the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion's been carried. Thank you so much. Okay, so next we have a standing authorization for board communication. The President of Board of Education shall, within two school days after each Board of Education meeting, meet with Director of Marketing and Communications to formulate and send out a Board Education Update email to the Riverside Local School District Community. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. Gary, can you call the roll?
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Nay.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Nay.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion is carried. Thank you. And the standing committee appointments for 2025, I had spoken with our, with Dan McIntyre, our Board Attorney, and I asked him if the President can hold a committee position. He said yes. So with that, I've been, I've been the Buildings and Grounds Chairman, and I would be keeping that role. And I believe that Mr. Keeney, with your building knowledge and expertise and land development knowledge and expertise and experience, I think you would be well suited for the second in that role. Would you be willing to do that?
Yes.
The second position, second member? Okay, and then we have, Mr. Keeney has been on the Board now for five meetings and actually serving on committees, I believe, for four. Would that be correct?
Yes.
And I think you have been the Chair of the Finance Audit and Personnel. And would you want to continue in that role?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting comfortable with it. I'm learning, and I would like to continue in that capacity.
So I would suggest that Ms. Grassi be that. She is a licensed Treasurer and understands finance audit and personnel, so I think it'd be benefit to have her as the Chair for that committee. We did discuss how our careers last time we did this. For instance, Ms. Brewster being a teacher, how she was good for the curriculum, and I think that serves the same here with Ms. Grassi, which I'm perfectly willing to do.
Okay, and then Ms. Grassi, if Mr. Keeney were the Chair, would you be willing to be the second person on that committee?
That's fine.
Thank you. And we have, as Ms. Krenski has just said, Ms. Brewster with her 42 years of experience, I think would be good on the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Brewster, would you be willing to serve on that committee?
Yeah.
And so the, what we have a situation here is because the President will be holding a, a position on one of the committees that is going to preclude another board member from having either two committee assignments or possibly a chair assignment. And so we're in a situation to where if there would be a board member that he would, either would want to or be willing to forego a second position. So that's where we are right now. So we're into policy, and we are into curriculum. And so question, and then also, Ms. Krenski, a question for you is, I know that you had mentioned in board meetings previously that sometimes mornings, because of your work schedule, were a little tight. Are you okay in the mornings for committees?
Yeah, I've worked out in the past, so yes.
Okay. And would you want to be on the Policy Committee?
That's fine.
And Ms. Grassi, would you also want to be on the Policy Committee?
No, I can be, I can just be on finance. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so you're fine with foregoing a second?
I'm completely fine with foregoing policy or curriculum. You're moving me off of Buildings and Grounds, so that's fine.
Okay, all right. So thank you for that. And so Ms. Krenski, then you'll be the Chair of Policy?
That's fine.
Thank you for that. And then we have, we have the curriculum. Ms. Brewster, then, would you be the Chair for that?
Yes.
And then we have, we have the second position on, on curriculum to fill. And then who would want to do that? Ms. Krenski, would you want to do that?
That is fine.
Okay, okay. And then, excuse me. So anyway, we have, we have, right now for the Buildings and Grounds, we have Scott Fischel and Dennis Keeney. For the Finance Audit Personnel, we have Dennis Keeney and Glenn DeGrassy. For the Curriculum, we have Denise Brewster and Lori Krenski. And then as Policy, we have Lori Krenski. And then...
Mr. Fischel, one thing the President has typically served as the Board Liaison for the Business Advisory.
Right, so I'm getting, getting, that'll be, yeah, getting, getting there. So, yeah, that's next. And so then Ms., Ms. Brewster, would you be the second person on Policy?
Unless Belinda, who's had some experience with policy, would like to do that.
No, we have added...
Yeah, I think she said that she was good with one assignment. So, okay, so thank you for that. Okay, so those will be the committees. And then, so also now we are into...
Now we have to vote on that.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, thank you for that. But I just wanted to be clear, do you have all the assignments? So for Buildings and Grounds, you have Scott Fischel and Dennis Keeney. Finance Audit Personnel, you have Dennis Keeney, Glenn DeGrassy. Policy, Lori Krenski, Denise Brewster, Curriculum Denise Brewster and Lori Krenski.
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, so thank you for that. And I make a motion to approve the standing committee appointments for 2025. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can you call the roll, please?
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Okay, now we're into Standing Board Liaisons.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. So now we're into the Standing Board Liaisons, and to your point, we're looking at the Superintendent's Business Advisory Committee Liaison, and yes, that would be me. So is what has been typical. Okay, so then we have the Alumni Association Liaison, the Booster Organizations Liaison, Legislative Liaison, and the Strategic Plan Committee Liaison.
Can I volunteer for the Alumni?
Okay, thank you so much. So Ms. Krenski would be Alumni?
Alumni.
I would like to continue with Legislative if that's not a problem.
Okay, so Ms. Grassi is Legislative. Okay, and then... Let me ask a question for anyone who knows. On the Booster Organizations Liaison, how much activity has there been there? Does anyone know?
They typically meet three or four times a year. It's when a member from each PTO or PTA come together. And it's more of, their big project every year is planning the Easter egg hunt, and then they also collaborate on fundraisers and things going on at each of their schools, and it's kind of...
Actually, I'll do that one if, if somebody wants to pick up Legislative.
I think there's more ways to get involved in the Booster one, too. There's a lot of activity, so there's other ways to get involved. How we've typically done it is coming to the RPTA meetings and hearing what's going on, so.
So, so it's open, and so what, what we're hearing is there's more opportunities to be involved. If someone wants to be in the Boosters, Ms. Grassi said that she would take over the Booster Organizations Liaison if someone else wants to do Legislative. So what say you?
Yeah, and could we just have a full picture of, last year the Strategic Plan Committee was more Facility?
It wasn't, we shifted it to the Facilities role. I don't know if we need to have that position. We have a plan.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking it might be kind of dormant.
It is a good time to relook at the potential, you know, relook at the Strategic Plan as to how we've gone, and maybe even, we're about midway through it, and so we're making it a good plan, so.
I think that we should have someone at least in place.
Facilities or for Strategic Plan?
Well, you can kind of morph it into both.
Both, okay.
You know, it could be the same thing, right?
I think we just call, go back to the Strategic Plan name, even though the Strategic Plan does cover Facilities, since the Facilities Plan's been approved and finalized.
The Facilities Plan was in the Strategic Plan, so.
So we'll leave it as Strategic Plan. Is that okay? And then, all right, so Mr. Keeney, Ms. Brewster, your thoughts and ideas on...
I can do Booster. I mean, I know you were assigned to it when you came on board, but if you want to keep it.
Belinda said she...
Oh, Belinda's going to do it?
I don't, I mean, I don't mind. I'll do either one.
No, no, that's fine. You can have Booster. So whichever you want to do, Legislative or Strategic.
I mean, I don't mind staying on Strategic since I was there.
Okay, so...
I mean, I don't want, I realize that the...
But then who's doing Legislative?
I realize that Legislative is a lot of work. It's a lot of reading, and it's a lot of involvement. And if somebody doesn't want to do that, I don't mind doing that. I'm going to read it anyway. So, but I don't mind doing either one.
Okay, so, so...
If somebody has a preference of not doing Legislative, I will do it.
Okay, so Ms. Brewster, you're saying Strategic Plan?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Mr. Keeney, you are saying what?
I'll do either one. I've done Booster in the past. I can continue doing that. She likes Legislative.
You like Legislative?
Okay. I don't love it. I do it because it's important to read.
Who wants to help plan the Easter egg hunt?
Well, there's a lot happening legislatively, so I think it's important to Santa.
I mean, either or. I don't, it's, whatever you're comfortable with, really.
Rock, paper, scissors? Use them, rock, paper, scissors?
Exactly.
I'll do Legislative.
Okay.
Okay, so you're off the hook on Legislative. Okay.
And I know these are standing board positions, but at some point, I don't know where to put this, is, we talked about, you know, working on the Treasurer and Superintendents, like revising the...
Okay, so I'm coming to that.
So you're getting there, okay.
Yeah, okay. So, so with that, these are the Standing Board Liaisons. And, excuse me, so I know we'll be voting to approve that. Along with that, I would just insert that we do have yearly the review of the Superintendent and the Treasurer, as Ms. Brewster brought up. And what I would be doing is appointing Ms. Brewster to be the point person for that. So that's just a note. I don't know if we have to formally put it in here to be a motion, but I just want to note that, that's a course of business that we have to handle. Last year did drag on a little bit, but this year I think we'd be a little bit more expeditious in getting that done. So would you be willing to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the Standing Board Liaisons for 2025. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you call the roll?
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. We have the tax budget for fiscal year 2026. And I make a motion to approve the tax budget for fiscal year 2026. Can I get a second?
Seven.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Gary, can you call the roll?
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next meeting announcement would be...
30th.
30th.
January 30th, that's 6:00 PM.
And a special meeting immediately following this meeting.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Right, we have another meeting. We have a special meeting immediately following this meeting. So we will adjourn this meeting at 8:11. And I make a motion to adjourn at 8:11. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you call the roll?
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
And so we have a special meeting.
Just have the, the last motion?
I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Motion is carried. So we have a special meeting, and so call to order. Notice this meeting was given in accordance with the provisions of Bylaw 0164B of the Riverside Local Board of Education, which was adopted in accordance with Section 1.450 of the ORC and the Ohio Administrative Procedures Act. And...
Call roll.
Yeah, can you call the roll on that, please?
Lori Krenski.
Here.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Krenski.
Here.
And, all right, so the business items are employment, and I make a resolution to approve the following employment items. We have Federica Betts, we have John Jack Chinacola and Delaney Likeman. And I make a motion to approve these. Can I get a second?
Second.
And Gary, can you call the roll? Okay.
We can have discussion, right?
Discussion, yes.
I'm assuming these are all as recommended by the Superintendent and Treasurer?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, and can you call the roll?
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
The motion's carried. We have the then and now certificate. And we have one item, and... The one item is the NEO net and the amount of 4,500 for the EMIS cross-check. I make a motion to approve that. Can I get a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? Gary, can you call the roll?
Glenn DeGrassy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion is carried, and we have, we have an adoption of the new revised board policies. And I understand Mr. Schlick, this is the one required second reading for the law change.
Correct. You guys did November, December, and this would be the adoption.
Right, and this is required, actually, by...
Came out of the name duck, and yes.
And there's a couple more you'll see in the Friday packet. There's...
Three additional ones.
Oh, so there's more, okay. We'll do one this month, and then we'll approve in February.
There's a policy that you all draft and already have based on the law, that like standard policy for school districts that require to have others that don't need, as they recommend it.
Okay, so make a... Okay, so make a resolution to approve the adoption of the new board policy 2265, Protections of Individual Beliefs, Affiliations, Ideals, or Principles of Political Movements and Ideology, and I'm assuming this is recommended by the superintendent?
Correct.
Okay, so can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Gary, can you call the roll?
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion is carried, and we have a, next item is land purchase at Riverview. Make a resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement with Robert P. Sidley, trustee, for approximately three point six five acres of vacant land immediately adjacent to Riverview Elementary School in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars per acre. Can I get a, I make a motion to approve that, can I get a second?
Aye.
Is there discussion?
We never had a chance to follow back up. I know there were some final things that were being brought in. I started to read this last night, but I have to say I did not make it through the whole thing. What were the final terms for the fence?
We are moving the fence, we're working on getting some contract proposals to get, get some numbers as to the cost to move the fence.
So the seller did not absorb that into their, we are paying.
Yes.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Questions, discussion? Gary, can you call the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Then we have the casement TIF approval, there's a resolution approving a real property tax exemption under revised Code Section 5709.41 in connection with the development of certain property in Painesville Township, compensation agreement and related matters. I make a motion to approve that, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
So I assume our attorneys worked out the final details that we had discussed?
And it's my understanding there's no real changes. In, in the last meeting, we had, the discussion was the changes would be legalese and, and nothing meaningful for numbers, so I think the numbers are close to the same, and, and there's some legal changes.
Mr. Placco, you worked with them?
Yes, yes.
Everything's...
Yeah, Mr. Seed kind of drafted the agreement, and a lot of things is make sure that the safeguards are in place to ensure that the district's compensated properly over the, the coming years that this development goes on.
Will we have a third party?
My understanding is...
Right, is that written into this at this point?
It is written into there, like, we're supposed to have a annual meeting in December of each year, review the numbers and where things are. Obviously, it's going to take a couple of years for things to start developing.
Will we have a third party, is there a stipulation for a third party to come in and do the calculations?
Right, David Seed said he'll help coordinate and oversee that process. I'm not sure if he's the third party or if we're having another third party, but there'll be definitely...
But it is... Somebody.
Somebody placed to ensure that. These things are highly complex and...
And as I understand it, at least from what the discussion was, they were intending to put that in for the long term, you know, throughout the whole process.
Right, right, throughout the whole process.
Because they had failed to put that in that way in, in the beginning, and that had to be added. I think that was done, right?
I think it was to keep it consistent so it doesn't get lost.
Well, that, and they want someone to confirm the numbers, and because...
Yep, right. Especially over time, you know, for township, the fight, fiscal officers, elected positions, and those will change more frequently typically, and then, you know, obviously, I'm not going to be here forever, so it's, over a thirty-year period, there's going to be obviously other treasurers and finance people in place.
Yes, and, and just as a note for anyone here and or watching or listening, sometimes you can run into a situation, like with Painesville, to where it's not always happening.
Correct, and we're, we're going through that right now with City of Painesville on TIF.
Right, so this, this is a little tighter agreement and has auditing in there to protect everyone's interest.
Correct.
Okay, so can you call the roll?
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye. Motion carried. All right, closing items, next meeting announcement, okay, January thirtieth at six PM.
Okay, and there's no work session between now and then?
Well, I'm going to be out of town for a couple of weeks.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And so if we, if it's okay with everyone, we can set the work sessions at the next meeting, is that okay with everybody? Okay?
That's fine. And, and then I also wanted to bring up the health insurance, the cost and, and what we're doing with that, if we could take this time to, there's been, you know, concerns expressed about the...
I'll provide update the next meeting, since it wasn't on the special meeting. Notice it's outside the scope of this meeting, but there are some things in, in process that I can give update at the January meeting, because there's some stuff happening actually later today as well, so I can give a better update.
Okay, because I believe everyone on the board probably saw an email by Bill Robertson, who has extensive knowledge and expertise in that arena, and I think actually worked with Mentor to help them do their agreement, to save a lot of money, and, and I think that he had mentioned that in Perry, they are actually doing something that is saving them money.
Yeah, so I guess we just need to be careful again, this is outside of the scope of the special meeting, so we probably should not have discussion really at the table about it today.
Okay, so it's just informational, and, and, and I think that we can, you know, go ahead and address that item, and, and maybe even appoint a special committee for it, so we'll, we'll see about that, because the president can appoint a special committee.
He can also handle it in finance committee if necessary.
Right, it could be handled in finance, it could be a special committee, it could be a combination of both, and, and so we'll see and have some discussion about that. So I move to adjourn at eight twenty-two, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you call the roll?
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and we'll see you next time.